Let's call the work session of the Silver Falls School District to order. Is the attendance steady? I guess the first item on our agenda is a district goal on public engagement opportunities. So we're gonna have some work sessions at some of the outlying schools. Andy, do you got any input on what will look any different? Or will just say if we have our same idea? Or are we gonna have like a... Should we have like a... It can essentially have a meet and greet with some locals or talk global issues?
Well, I'd like your input on how you'd like to do that. You could do one of a couple of things. You could just use the regular format, seven o'clock beginning and do an audience with visitors, which I'd recommend beginning or end of the meeting. I appreciate your feedback. If you want to do a meet and greet of some sort as well and open the doors at 6:30. Just let, you know, say hi to folks, that would be alright too. I think we just have to be cautious about doing any board deliberation or anything like that without calling a phone meeting. But otherwise, that would be the minimal recommendation. But maybe six of you have some thoughts on what you'd like those meetings to look like?
Yeah, I just think it'd be the same meeting, except that maybe, you know, afterward, you know, we may, I guess we could have... We should have an audience with visitors or not, because then they're talking just local stuff. But, you know, we certainly can chat it up afterwards with them. You know, I don't know, does anyone else have any thoughts on that? Wouldn't be far.
I think we should have an audience with visitors, just because that's the reason why we're doing it, I guess, is to... Maybe if Jamie sent out a one-call note, the community, tell them we're gonna do it.
Sure, sure, we can do that. The principals of the respective communities to do that. Of course, everyone will be invited, but we're holding it at Silver Crest, and you know, I think sure gives the indication if we're asking Silver Crest folks to come in and attend the meeting. But yeah, we can do that. And we'll put it on the district website, and in fact, I believe it's already on there, how meeting changes, and we'll promote it. So I'm looking forward to this. I think it's gonna be great.
I think it'd be good if we had name tags, so we would give us a chance to kind of see, you know, remember who these people are.
Name tags for?
For the audience.
For the audience, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty easy for them to remember us with our names.
That's true.
I need a quick reminder, if there's, you know, maybe no one, maybe someone might wanna come in and, you know, would like to speak in the board meeting, just kind of remind them what the procedures are. You know, if there's one issue that three or four of them wanna talk about, you know, it might be best to organize it, just have one person talk about it. Just kind of, just give them a rough idea, you know, if there's interest, you know, a rough idea of how it's gonna go down. What it means to have, you know, to be at the meeting, you know, you gotta give them one chance to speak to us if they like.
Can you do the one call, it's gonna go up to the whole district?
I can do that.
Oh, I was just thinking, you know, if it's, if it was Silver Crest, maybe some of my kids, you know, parents of Victor Point, hey, hey, that's pretty close, we can take that. Or, you know, Buute Creek here, maybe Scott's Mills would be the same sort of thing, so...
Absolutely, we can do that.
I think it's hard to know probably what the attendance is gonna be, so this'll be our first time, so we might wanna just... See what happens.
We'll make it happen.
Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is use of remediation intervention and extension, commonly referred as RIE, opportunities at Silverton High School beginning November 30th. Wade and Heather.
Just kind of a little bit of outline here of things that we're gonna...
Yeah, put me to shame.
Need to have lockers here.
Bring your tie to work.
Strength himself.
So Wade Lockett, Heather Basher, she's our A.G., organizer and leadership teacher at the high school. I don't know how familiar everybody here is with RIE and what it is and what it's intended to do. The idea of remediation intervention and extension, it's about a 16-minute, roughly a 16-minute period of time, once a week, right now twice a week, that we spend to help students that are struggling, use it as extension time for students that are a little more advanced. Usually what happens are the process, the students are requested by some of their teachers during these periods of time, then they are able to kind of shift around classroom to classroom. Our A.G. period is roughly 30 minutes a day. And the RIE period was a period originally intended, it was on Thursday after school. I believe this is the original, going back several years. Towards the end of the school day, it was about roughly an hour, a little over an hour was this RIE period, where they would take and split it into two roughly 30-minute sessions, and kids that were needing to get some remediation, intervention, or extension in certain classes were requested by teachers, need to get become into these classes and get the help that they needed. Last year, that changed. We embedded RIE into our regular school day, and then it became a Wednesday and a Thursday, roughly a 30-minute period, and took up time during the A.G. Well, what we noticed during this time, certainly last year, is it became very chaotic. Students kind of all over the place, we had all 1,300 students at the school at the same time. Some of them going between classes, spending a lot of that 30 minutes in between classes, going from one place to the other. Teachers having a lot of trouble trying to organize what to do with these students that they weren't requesting, that didn't need the remediation intervention and extension. The whole purpose of that program is to provide access to the students during the regular school day to be able to see their teachers, to get the extra help that they needed. We noticed that in the change that we made from 2015, 16, to 1617, that our number of students that got F's, our number of F's in classes, really increased quite a bit. So what we are looking to do at this point right now is actually go back to the way that it originally was and troubleshoot some of the issues that really weren't working at that time. We believe that the process itself is something that, again, gives equal access to the teachers. There are some students that simply need a little bit more time with the teachers. This gives them that time during the regular school day, this alleviates some stress and anxiety for things that are not getting done. And we believe that it supports a standards-based grading where we're able to call in students to help meet specific standards, groups of students that might need specific standards or need help with specific standards, where teachers can work with a group of students all at once, working on one specific thing. So at this point right now, like I said, the current system creates a little bit too much multitasking, a little too much chaos during the regular school day for it to be a valuable use of time.
And to piggyback on what he's saying, so you can understand too, so teachers have their A.G. students with them, so 20 to 25 students, and they're trying to call in and help maybe this group that needs help on a specific standard. So it's still, it's a lot to ask teachers to do, and so this brings back that time where students can, we get, our A.G. comes in, we, you know, tell them where they need to go, what they need to do, and they can go and do things, and one of the options being they can leave campus at that time, but only after, you know, we've encouraged them to take advantage of every other opportunity that will be there, including extension, so...
And we feel like there are two things that we would like to kind of refocus on as we move back to the way that it originally was. One is a refocus and a reemphasis on the extension piece. We feel like the school's done a very good job of the remediation intervention piece, haven't really focused as much on the extension piece as we would like. We'd like to refocus on that. Number of ideas have come to the table to be able to focus on that. And two, we do believe that some students making the decision to leave campus is actually something that allows us to kind of lower that student-to-teacher ratio during that period of time, and get those kids that individual attention that they need, both of the extension piece, the remediation piece, and the intervention piece. So we believe that's part of what makes it work. Our reimplementation date for this process is gonna be November 30th, which is right after conferences. We're hoping that during that conference period, that week before the conference period, we can use a real heavy campaign during conferences via the Edgemane, one-call system, emails, these sorts of things, that we can really begin to blast this stuff up, let parents know how a table set up conferences where they can ask questions, we can talk about what it is we're trying to do and the value of it. So that's really what we're looking at doing. The emphasis, again, is gonna be on keeping kids on campus as much as possible to keep extension opportunities for them. So the emphasis isn't gonna be for us to get students to leave campus, though again, we do understand the value of that when it comes to the teacher-to-student-to-teacher ratio, but we will be providing extension opportunities really as often as we possibly can. And again, ideas to be able to do that, whether it's through college visitations being scheduled at this time, whether it's through each department being required to offer at least one extension opportunity a month, which would give us, you know, two or three extension opportunities per week. So there's a lot of ideas that are being kicked around in order to be able to do that.
And encourage club activity, like more people to join clubs, like robotics club, STEM club, just those type of opportunities as well.
Right, because it gives kind of a natural built-in time for people to be able to be a part of their clubs. We will leave, yeah, go ahead.
Especially for students who can't spend time outside of school, their transportation or extra other activities don't give them opportunity to participate in activities.
We have been made aware of a few of the logistical issues that existed with this process, the way it existed before. We have come together as an administrative team, Heather's been a part of this, that we feel like we've been able to come up with a plan to troubleshoot a lot of those issues, and we don't believe they're going to be issues moving forward. So that's where we're at. We will also emphasize what RIE is not. It is not a time for students and parents to be making appointments outside of school. It is a part of the regular school day. We expect them to plan on it being a part of the regular school day. We will emphasize to coaches, this is not a time to get their athletes together to do workouts and cut weights, wrestling, that this is academic time, it is time to grow, and we're gonna emphasize that process to make sure we can give all the kids as much individual attention as we can in order to move all of our students forward.
So if your, if the students are in A.G. to begin with in the RIE, am I understanding that right?
That's where they go first.
They first, and then you disperse them to where they need to go, and if they don't need to go anywhere, do they stay for study hall?
If, on RIE days?
Yes.
If they are not requested and they aren't failing any course, having D or F in any course, then they can leave campus.
In the proposal, the way, are you talking about currently, right now, what do they do?
Yeah, like if they're not gonna stay, they're gonna leave.
Yes, on Thursdays in the afternoon, when we begin this schedule.
And so if they're reading it for a club, is that something that the teachers are gonna supervise, or can other staff supervise those club activities?
Everything will be supervised.
Oh, yeah, I'm just trying to see like where the teachers get freed up so that they can work with the students who need the remediation and intervention.
Right, so teachers would have to schedule, like if they're head of a club, they'd have to use one session to work with kids in the intervention, and maybe one session for a club activity, and then maybe team up with another teacher to, hey, can you work with these kids? So they would have to schedule that.
I'm taking a lot of coordination.
Every student with a D or an F is not gonna be able to be requested every single week, but we would expect that if that student is not requested, they would remain with their A.G. teacher to work on strategies in order to be able to help them move out of that D and F zone.
Got it, so that's the question that I asked originally.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And the idea would be that an student with a D or an F is going to stay. They are not...
They don't have the option.
They don't have the option to go anywhere. You know, they're either with their A.G. teacher or they are requested.
When will the release time, when will RIE start on Thursdays, and what time?
So right now, the original schedule, we're kind of playing with those numbers because we do wanna make sure that we get it right, that there's enough individual time within each of those two sessions. But the release time would be, as it was, 1:54. We're gonna try and keep it pretty close to this, 1:54, 1:55, at which point they would go to their A.G. teacher, every A.G. teacher would take attendance, they would kind of organize their kids, you're going here, you've been requested here, you're staying with me, you're going to a club. Then there's a 10-minute point where, you know, we get a ready break, and kids go to where they go, at which point we're looking at roughly a 25, 26-minute period, then a five-minute path, then another 25, 26-minute period, and then that would take us right to 3:05.
I'm really glad to see this coming back. I was really concerned when it went away, just because of the time, especially for remediation, and how it would affect those kids. And it's interesting that you saw the number of failing students in classes go up when that went away, so I, for one, am really glad to see it come back. I think it's really valuable. I know there was an issue last time, kids leaving and running around town. It is what it is. We need to make time for those kids that need the extra help, so I think it's good.
And again, if we can emphasize the extension piece, and we can emphasize getting involved, you know, it might keep kids on campus.
Yeah, if you really, and, you know, like scheduling college visits and things like that during that time, that would be awesome. You could do that, have different colleges maybe possibly come in every week even if you... So that would, I think that would be really good.
That would be the idea.
And even, I don't know, even trade schools and things like that, or have an electrician come in and talk about apprenticeship program and things like that.
Right.
So there's lots of stuff.
And just so you know, last year, we already even, the counselors have created those opportunities already, so we just need to make them happen.
Oh, good, just for me, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Very cool.
Yeah, I guess, roughly how many kids were leaving campus previous years?
Probably have to get back and see.
I'm not sure I've got that specific.
It doesn't need to be a specific number, I would imagine, that you guys are...
A few hundred, maybe a few hundred, yeah.
Just curious.
We have roughly 1,300 students, and I think our number's 1,294 at this point, so let's not say that we'd be requesting 900 of them, because I don't think we're at that point, but creating extension opportunities and kids sticking around and what have you, there would be a few hundred that would leave campus. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, the draft finding effect for exemption from competitive bidding and the use of construction manager, general contractor, or forming a CMGC method for seismic rehabilitation project at Silverton Middle School.
So Zach Soaks from ZCS Engineering is here. Lauren Stanley apologizes, Lauren was out ill today, and he was hoping to make it into the evening, but he texted me about six and just said, there's no way. So Zach is the engineer that we work with on the Scotts Mills, Buute Creek, and Victor Point projects, and ZCS Engineering is also the engineer that's been selected for the Silverton Middle School project, and the Robert Frost project, and the Mark Twain Elementary project. And so we're pleased to have their expertise, I think they've done a great job with us. One thing that Zach brings to the table is his understanding of this model of contracting called construction manager, general contractor, CMGC. And for a few of you, this is familiar territory, but for others, that's part of the reason why Zach is here this evening, is to explain that model a little bit. And what I'll say from the school district standpoint is, CMGC actually requires an exemption from competitive bidding for you, this is driven by law, and it puts you in a position as the local contracting board to actually hold a public hearing, which would be scheduled for your November regular session, to provide anyone from the community an opportunity to say why they wouldn't, or why they do, would support it, want this exemption. And I'll let Zach explain that a little bit more about how all that works, but that's kind of the business end of it, and I'm gonna turn it over to Zach for more of the technical end.
To follow up a little bit on what Andy said with respect to the business end, as the school district, you guys can function at, you can name yourselves the local contractor review board, which gives you the opportunity through SAVLOF to select an alternate contracting method. There's a handful of alternate contracting methods, but the one that we're talking about, as Andy said, is construction manager, general contractor. What that means is, rather than going through a formal design, bid, build, procurement methodology, which is standard, or has been standard for construction for a long time, we can get a contractor on early during the design process, utilize them as a part of the design team. So we are looking at cost estimates with them, we're getting value engineering advice, we're working on details together as one team, and they're helping with schedule and coordination for projects that are really complicated. When we're getting into the nuts and bolts of an existing facility, doing a seismic upgrade, ZCS has found that this is the most effective way to get a project successfully built. We do these all over the state, and it's our preferred method of contracting, because we all come together as a team, work out how to get the job done. We're engineers, we can design the fixes that we need to have constructed, but every contractor's gonna have a little different take on the best way to do that. They may have input on, into a detail that we come up with that's more costly than it needs to be, because they can approach it from a different way. Maybe rather than coming in from underneath and affecting a ceiling, we can go in from the outside and get into a socket. Just an example of, contractors looking at different components of the design through a different lens than an engineer's going to. What you've got in front of you is a proposed finding of fact. So the process is, as the local contractor review board, you would review this finding of fact, taking comments from the public, and then determine whether or not you as the local contractor review board want to accept this exemption as, for this project specifically. This is for the gymnasium at Silverton Middle School. Some locations, some projects, aren't a perfect match for the CMGC process. The Robert Frost play structure seismic retrofit is a project that we anticipate doing in the same timeline, and that project, we've recommended and worked with the district to determine that a standard design, bid, build, procurement methodology will be best. There aren't a whole lot of access considerations, the space can be reasonably separated from the rest of the school, everything's exposed. It's not, it's not a super complicated retrofit project, and scheduling isn't gonna be a big issue. So we think that the best way to approach that project is from the traditional design, bid, build standpoint. The gymnasium, however, is a different animal. It's complicated. It's gonna be a challenge to get it done in the 10 weeks that we have for summer and get everything back ready for school. There's detailing requirements that we're gonna come up with, but we would, the district would gain benefit by having the contractors input during the design phase. It helps with project costs. If they can get in, get their hands dirty with us, go explore the site, and be ready to hit the ground running when that 10-week period comes up. They already know the drawings, they've gone through the building, they've helped figure out how to build the details that we've come up with, and all of that process really works to the district's advantage. So the evaluation of this findings of fact is acknowledging the savings that the district should see from the CMGC process, it's reviewing the benefits of the process to the district and effectively accepting them on behalf of the district and acknowledging that it's, that the CMGC methodology is something that you wanna pursue. For a gymnasium seismic retrofit of this magnitude, we find it's a very good solution. That's kind of my intro 10,000-foot glance over everything. Do you have any specific questions? Is there anything you'd like me to touch on more or less?
I have a question about just how it's worked in the past. So this same process was for Scotts Mills, Buute Creek, and Victor Point, right? And how were the costs, were there cost overages on those projects, or did this process seem to keep costs contained?
Our experience is that it keeps costs contained. That is, we're still working on closing out Buute Creek and Victor Point. Those projects, we'll see where the costs land. That hasn't all worked out yet. At Victor, or excuse me, at Scotts Mills, it worked out very well. There's a handful of reasons, as I'm sure Andy can discuss, why Buute Creek and Victor Point are kind of up in the air right now, there were some unforeseen conditions and some other things that came up. However, we've utilized this process on around probably 100 projects throughout the state, and what we find is that it helps, it gives us the best shot at coming in on budget, which is really what we need. One of the components of this is, we have a limited amount of money, and for us to sit down with the contractor and say, okay, we've got a limited amount of money, here's what it is, this is the scope of work that we have to get done, gives us a much higher level of success being able to sit down with them, do value engineering, rather than sit down with the contractor who was a little bit, and is gonna be trying to get every dollar that they can out of a change order.
So if it was the design-build process for those two sites, you would, they would have still probably uncovered the unforeseen issues, and the costs in your estimation might have been higher for them.
Jennifer, I can share a very recent example, and that's with Silverton Middle School. Because this, Silverton Middle School was a hard bid project, while there was maybe some merit to the CMGC, the timeliness of it, and to some other uniqueness about the building, and just some cost containment decisions were made, but the change orders there were inordinate, and there were so many, and had the contractor come on board, and had we had the time to have the contractor come on board preliminarily, I fully believe that many of those would have been handled ahead of time and would have been fully discovered in the timeline, even beginning the project completed satisfactorily on time. If there was some delay to some last-minute things there, would have been much, much better managed. But, so, and specific to Buute Creek, just to be real clear, and Victor Point, actually Zach is coming back tomorrow, we're having a meeting with the contractor to be certain. We firm up some reconciliation about those, because it's not only the grant, but we also have some reimbursement through E-rate dollars, we also have some general fund budgeted dollars for some select projects at those schools, and so we still have to sort that out. But like I shared with the board once in the past, I believe the Buute Creek project will come in over budget. Don't know how much that is going to be yet. I feel better about Victor Point, that we're going to be at or close to budget with that one, but even at Scotts Mills last year, we weren't certain until a few months after the beginning of the school year, after we fully reconciled everything.
If I can add to that, at Buute Creek, Buute Creek's kind of a different animal. It was a large project when we put together the, we put together the grant application and the cost estimate, and that was, I think that was about three years ago, maybe four years ago, that that cost estimate was generated. It went through the grant funding cycle, it was selected, it was funded, and ideally it would have been completed last summer with Scotts Mills, or, yes, with Scotts Mills. At the last minute, the contractor got bids, and due to that heightened construction market that we've been seeing, we couldn't get it together fast enough to pull the trigger to get them into construction last year. We went back through and did value engineering with the CMGC contractor, worked the problem, and were able to get it to where they had a guaranteed maximum price that fell within the budget. As Andy said, there's a handful of different components that will likely lead to that one being over budget, but I feel that by having it be the CMGC process, it only benefited the district.
Well, and from the contractor's standpoint, it's a lot more expedient to do it this way, because every time you come up to a change order, you have to get it approved, and so while you're getting it approved, your crew's gotta stand by, or you gotta go have them go to another job, and this makes it a lot easier to keep working and keep the schedule on track.
Along those lines... Along those lines, we're perfecting this process also. We do this a lot, and we learned some lessons on Scotts Mills, Victor Point, and Buick Creek, and other projects throughout the state, and we're working on our contract. We made some pretty substantial edits to that to more clearly define the responsibilities of the CMGC contractor versus dealer, where contingencies lie, and how we're going to make up the budgets, so that we can avoid some of the problems that we've had, whether big or small, and advance the process based on lessons learned.
Can you talk a little bit about how the contractor will be selected for that project?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is the first step. After the local contractor review board publishes, or accepts this, notes will be published in the paper that we're going after a CMGC contractor, the documents will be available through the district and through ZCS, and an RFP, request for proposals, will be published. That document will ask for all the contractor's qualifications and references, et cetera, so that the district can make a good decision. As part of that, we require that they provide their general conditions, fees. That's the, the overhead effectively, that they're going to charge the district for a project of a set magnitude, say $1.5 million, $1.2 million. They're going to give us a CMGC fee, that's a percentage of the construction cost that they'll charge for, for the CMGC work. I've seen that as low as two, and I've seen that as high as 12%. It depends on contractor's approach to the project, how much of the work they're going to do in-house, how much they're going to sub out, and the last fee that we request is a pre-construction fee. So, that fee is for the work that they're going to do up until they have a guaranteed maximum price that's approved by the board, and we roll into construction. So that covers all the value engineering, all the upfront value engineering, all the working with the design team through the designing process, cost estimates, schedule, all of that stuff. So, they submit proposals on the said day, the district has a selection committee that reviews those proposals, and selects a contractor. That can involve an interview process if the district likes, it doesn't have to. It, it's a pretty thorough process, it really gives the district good opportunities. In a location like this, I think the first time that we did it, we had three proposers, I don't remember about the second time, but usually, for a community kind of like this, we'll see two or three proposals come in. Right now, the contractor market's strong, so it limits everybody. We've got jobs that haven't even got bids for hard bid projects. This is a way to entice good contractors to do the work, qualified contractors. What we don't want, and we've had sometimes in the past, is with a hard bid situation, you end up with a contractor that may not fully understand what they're doing, may not have done seismic retrofit elementary schools or, or high schools before, and they don't understand the gravity of working in those environments, which is very important in educational work.
Are we just talking the gym on this project?
Yeah, so right now, we're just talking the gym. Robert Frost is going to be kind of the same schedule, but we're going to do that one hard bid, because it, it makes sense.
Okay.
And then Mark Twain would be the next construction season.
Okay.
So Andy, how do you handle that, the district selection process? You and Lauren and Zach, how do you make that?
Yeah, we've, we actually have three or four people on the committee, have invited board members to participate in the past, and it's an invitation again, because we're going to need a committee. And, yes, generally me, Lauren, business manager, we've had community members as well, it's a, the co-compliance officer, inspector for the city, has helped us with these in the past, and that board member. So normally, we need four or five folks on there, it's for the objective. There's a full scoring system, scoring sheet, we have to validate it, summarize it, and we on occasion will bring folks in for interviews unless the team agrees that there is a bona fide contractor to select, based upon the scoring system we use.
Okay.
You bet.
That scoring rubric's included in the RFP selection, so everybody knows what the selection criteria is going to be.
And I'm assuming this is becoming industry standard, this kind of process?
It's not uncommon. I wouldn't say it's standard, hard bid is still the norm, but it's not out of the ordinary by any means.
Or complicated.
Correct.
Silverton High School was constructed on a CMGC contract, because of the uniqueness of that, because it was a phase two, it was an addition to a phase one construction, and the complexities of that, and, so we have used it on occasion in the past, I can't remember other contracts specifically, on Scotts Mills and Buick Creek and Victor Point. However, it's only two or two everyone's home. The Zach-like hard bid is predominantly what we use.
So what's the size of this project? The gym is, we're going to have to start a little early, or finish a little late?
I think, well, Zach can chime in, but I believe because it's the gym, we have some flexibility, that it's, it's going to be minimal and maybe even non-existent impact with some teaching areas of the school, won't affect this site at all, and the adjacent classrooms, it'll affect those. The gym is a hallway, so we do need it for that, for that purpose specifically, but it seems to me, since there's the disconnect, and we don't have to mobilize teachers and move things out of classrooms and do a lot of work that we've had to do at the other schools, this one, I think it's going to be a little bit more realistic in what we, how soon we can begin, and how soon we can get folks back in there when it's completed.
I guess what I would add to that is, two, three, we've been doing this for nine years. Two or three years ago, four years ago, it wasn't terribly difficult to get people in and out in a summer, even on a project like Buick Creek or Victor Point. Buick Creek's a little bit of an exception, that's, that's big and hairy with the cafeteria, but Victor Point, to have a contractor come in and get out within the 10-week period, wasn't, wasn't a challenge. With subcontractor availability the way it is right now, we've seen more and more projects that have had to stretch. I've had more projects this year on a percentage basis than I have in prior years that have either started early or stretched into the fall, just to get completion. And, like I said, I think one of the main reasons is subcontractor availability, everybody's really busy. That being said, for a gym project like this, I've had some that took the 10 weeks this year, but in reality, if we can come in a little early, if the contractor can come in a little early, that's best. I, there's cost savings there, we're not looking at overtime costs, we're not looking at doubling up crews, things like that, to get the work done. It's still a $1.2 million project, it's a big chunk of work, so to get that done in 10 weeks, I can't sit here and say, oh yeah, we can do it all day long. It'll probably be the kind of thing where the contractor, once they're hired on, says, hey, we've put together a schedule, and it's more like 12 weeks, but we can access it from the outside, there's really good access to this project specifically, can we start a little early? And the district may say, I don't know, that's where we pulled junior high graduation or something. And that's one of the reasons that the CMGC process is great, is we can work with the district. We worked with San Yan Canyon School District, got into the gym, I think it was about a month early, that's their high school gym, it's also where they pulled graduation, they had floor protection down, and got everything cleaned up enough after, after they did a bunch of work so that they could pull graduation, and then dumped the graduation stuff out and continued on with the work. It worked really well. It was the same kind of thing, two sides of the gym were exposed, they could access, access it from the exterior, closed off from the rest of the school, it wasn't a huge impact on day-to-day operations, and it allowed the project adequate time to get done without increased costs being realized by the district.
What do you see going forward for the, for, for getting subcontractors availability? Is it going to be tight for a few years?
I don't see it getting better.
Yeah, we got the bonds in Portland and we pretend...
There's bonds everywhere, Ryan. Everybody's been asking bonds. The, the four $8 million match through the state has really motivated people to pass bonds, and there's, there's the big ones, but then there's a bunch of eight to 12 million dollar bond projects throughout the state also. I don't see this market slowing down, which is, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
In all reality, for, for a small $1.2 million project, it's hard to get somebody interested, because it takes up a crew for a summer, even if it's just a superintendent and a project manager, you've got to have the right contractor. And then to motivate subs to go to a job like that, when there are other really large jobs, is a challenge. So it's, it's a bit of a feat, in all reality, to get one of these constructed in a summer and have it all go off perfectly. Usually, we're able to do that.
Yeah. So far, so good.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Zach? All right, are we good? Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we're going to adjourn to executive session under ORS 192.6602A to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, review of a student record, and also ORS 192.6602E to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, the sale of Eugene Field School. All right, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Let's return to regular session. Does anybody have any further business? Okay, seeing none, meeting adjourned.
Thank you everyone for coming.